Yeah. Everybody wants to get started. What are we doing tonight? We've got a nice flow. All right, someone called to order the next twenty third. I've brought up commissioner meeting those present of all the commissioners. I'd like to pop on Commissioner DeBello's voice, Diana, to let you know. We all want to put people on the clock. All right. Well, good evening, Limerick Township. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first meeting on the road. And thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. I know you could be anywhere else, but you chose to be right here. I want to give a special thanks to our county staff who helped us coordinate the meeting with this place to make this happen. And of course, the Limerick Township for making this happen. I'd like to acknowledge Tin Haas and Denver, Denver, the loops. The lens from Limerick Township for your assistance. And of course, Commissioner DeBello, thanks for facilitating this and welcoming us to your home. So this is a great opportunity for process commissioner to highlight some of the things happening right here in Limerick Township and the surrounding areas. For example, PennDOT is spending eighty four million to rebuild and improve U.S. four twenty two in Lower Flat Springs. This county started working with PennDOT on this project more than twenty years ago. And anyone who has driven on four twenty two knows it has felt like it's taken more than two decades to fix them. This will be the fourth phase with the final two phases taking place in Chesapeake County. In twenty twenty one, Limerick received a county grant of sixty thousand dollars from the month of twenty forty implementing grant program. To finish the trail extension from Limerick Center Road to Reed Road. This completed project now provides access to the Perkyon and Schoolville River Trails. I'm going to allow Commissioner DeBello to share more highlights about Limerick Township and some of the work the county is doing in his comments. This upcoming Monday, we all know, Memorial Day. And there are many significant focuses in Montgomery County whose memory and honor are followed here in our county. Tomorrow, I will personally be attending time in our autumn veteran services staff to place memorial flags at the county courthouse lawn. On Saturday, May twenty sixth, Montgomery County, Montgomery Cemetery in Yarstown will be hosting a Memorial Day observance. And Hattville American Legion is hosting a flag-wrenching ceremony. And on Monday, Hattstown will be holding its annual Memorial Day parade and ceremony. For some, this weekend marks the beginning of summer. But for many, it's a summertime to afluffle on the sacrifices of our military servicemen and women and their families. This is especially a difficult time for my family. As we remember my and honor my sister-in-law, Sarah Mitchell, who was an infant in the Navy, died in twenty eighteen while serving our fine trade in the New Orleans human training unit in the Red State. And so I'd like to send my thoughts and prayers and appreciation to those who have given the ultimate sacrifice as we remember them this Memorial Day. Many National Mental Health Awareness Month. As commissioners, we've attended many community events throughout this month. Commissioner Makisha and I attended the NADI walk at Temple Amherst Campus. Commissioner DeBello and I participated in the county's seventh mental health awards. And last week, I spoke at DARA forum, the Drug Addiction Resource Alliance Forum with my brother. And for the first time, he shared our family's stories and experience with addiction and problems. I want to thank the numerous county staff, partners, and service providers for the work that they do every day to serve those who are dealing with mental health and challenges with addiction. Mental health issues are not rare, and they should not be stigma sometimes. And so we're glad that we were able to recognize mental health. One organization that has helped lead the way in a whole part of our community, our team foundation, is the PA Youth Advocacy Network. The coalition of high school youth and youth-serving organizations advocates for mental health system change. We have with us today some representatives of the PA Youth Advocacy Network. So where's Sarah? Sarah here? Hello, Sarah. How about Johnny? There you are, right in front. Great. Well, thank you for being here. So the PA Youth Advocacy Network advocates for initiatives such as mental health education, increasing school counselors, substance use prevention efforts, and policies for school mental health days. So an appreciation for you and the work that your group does. We are pleased to present a proclamation, so we're going to have you come on up here, that May twenty third, twenty twenty four is Team Mental Health Awareness Day. So we're going to have you.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here in Limerick. I would thank my fellow commissioners, President Commissioner DeBello, for really kicking off this initiative of getting out to the meetings across the county. Next time, we're going to pick the one that sure is for my community. Let's just take that. I want you to find, but it's really great to be here. It's just sunshine cafe, so it'll be a great place to stop right before you're here. So, but it's really important for us, a very big county, so we're going to be out here and, you know, being able to be accessible to more people at different times is important for us to be protecting other communities. So I just want to point out a couple of things. One, we, the first thing in our meeting for those who haven't been here, which is to recognize some kind of employees who've done turnary work. So I'm going to call her Way to Go Winners, Way to Go Loco. So I want to recognize a few of them. Sorry if I'm sticking around with this slide. There we are. Sticking around a little bit, so that time. I want to start with Christine Barry. She's at Payroll Controlants. And tell me if anybody's here, anybody else up there. No, I don't have a video though. Christine Barry is at Payroll Controlants, the Controller's Office. Christine's hard work and attention to detail are instrumental in making sure new hires are onboard smoothly. She's diligent, a caring teammate who's dedicated to making the department strong as it can be from what we're seeing. Next, we have Joanne Hall. She's a park ranger and parks, trails, and historic sites. Joanne is known as a people person who always has time to listen to patrons out in the parks. She always asks the questions to learn as much as possible about her job and what she can do to serve the community. And she enjoys sharing that knowledge with patrons to provide as much clarity and care as possible. Next, Veronica Hillman. She's a donation coordinator in the Children's Youth. Veronica is an exceptional, you know, service to families in the county through her leadership and organizing and coordinating multiple supply drives each year. That's not a really responsibility, though. Veronica's also huge for bringing things up for new hires in the department as well. So thank you, Veronica, for all your work. Next, Cameron Corcas is the Department Officer with Supervision Services. On the one, Cameron's daily duties in supervision, he has self creating healthy working relationships with outside agencies and schools. So nearly three years within the department, Cameron has been a tremendous asset of qualities there in probation. And last but not least, Lorraine Stendel Grant is a principal transportation planner in our planning committee. She's a true professional of her lies on her experience in the Army, but simply the partners that create projects going in across the field line. And there's no need to do great patients and praise. So the county is really lucky to have all the folks we mentioned and all the kind of labor submitted by their colleagues. And we're all incredibly grateful. So please give them a round of applause. So next, I want to recognize two months that are both important to me in all different ways. One is it means a heritage month. And the second is Jewish American Heritage Month. And for the first, I'd like to recognize a group of students who are doing tremendous work in civic engagement and have really been impressive in Montgomery County, really across the state of the country now. So is John Lee Brown here? Yeah, I think so. I think he says. Just go ahead. So John Lee Brown is here. I was the founder of a group called New Roters. It's a national student-run nonprofit that aims to register as many eligible students as possible, including their alumni. And she founded that when she was in high school and in the run-up to the twenty eighteen elections, grew leadership. You've never seen the major expansion of this nonprofit. They engaged over eighty thousand high school students and run three hundred fifty high school programs in thirty nine states around the country. In twenty twenty four, they plan to engage another forty thousand students. I was incredibly impressed by this group. And I meant to be an asker about the students in Montgomery County and the work that they're doing here. So pleased to honor you among the commissioners for your nonpartisan work and charity fellows of all backgrounds. And are able to come up and particularly then this work give us to the process with the continuing team and in high school. So I want to, each of you, I want to ask each of you to come up. So John Lee Brown is coming up, one of Mahindra, Mahindra, and Barsha. And we want these, please come up here so we can recognize you. Please recognize them.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and for this recognition. It's a huge honor to be here, along with our special high school students. As you might know, four million students graduate from high school every single year. And you might not know this, over ninety percent of them, around ninety percent of them, are eligible to register to vote by the time they graduate. So many of you probably have high school students in your lives or you're the parents of some wonderful students. By which means you know that graduation season is coming up. So if you are somebody who would like to see about voter registration integrated into your high school graduation this year, please come let me know. You can also email me. My email's on the chat box, but it is truly an honor to be here. High school students have unlimited potential and capacity. As many of you already know, they've registered their first to vote, run nationwide vaccinations campaigns, started, you know, March for Our Lives, things like that. So it is truly an honor to be here, especially back home here. And I'm very grateful for the support of one really funny and Christian talks everything for supporting high school education. So thank you all so much.
Yeah, one more. Jewish American Heritage Month, in addition to the PA Heritage Month, may, so it's Jewish American Heritage Month, as well as saying, don't forget, you know, most of the time, we want Jewish unity, in bring law, and in this. This month, we're actually anti-Semitism taking place. And it's really important for us to recognize that as a, as a commission, we really stand out against all forms of defamation and hate. And we really celebrate all of the communities' backgrounds. There are many ways that we do that. It's like my spouse is Jewish, we saw that at the protest. We're just recognizing that tradition, we, we carry on and we honor something that we are grateful for and is one of the things our community, engaging in, I think, and share that tradition. So it's, yes. I have one other thing. We've got to keep it short. The first thing I was going to say is, how many pivots do we have left? But no, I'll just say, same Memorial, you know, eight. We recognize that alongside the Commissioner Ryder, whichever one was singing. Happy Memorial Day weekend. It's, you know, it's a time to spend with family. I know many of you, you know, a different event for a several. And one of the things, one of those, your family members who have something to say, to apologize.
No, this is, this is great. This, this was a, this was a huge goal of mine to, pretty much county commissioner meetings on the road. And when I presented this idea to my fellow commissioner, colleagues, friends, partners, they quickly agreed that this was a, this was a awesome idea. And I'm glad to bring it to Limerick as our first one. And I do want to recognize the staff as well, that both in Limerick and our staff, that are both able to get everything running. I've been set a position to be, I don't, I hate to say it, but everything's running flawless. So that's a good thing. I don't know what jinxed it, but this is, this is exciting. And I also want to recognize County Manager Dan Curry. He's standing over there. Thank you for allowing us to be here. And I did see there are two township supervisors here this evening. I know Fitzbarry in the back there, and Pat Maron, Pat, there you are. So thank you again for everything you guys have thrown out here in Limerick. It's important for us to make these kind of meetings accessible to different constituents all around the country. And our goal is to get a regular schedule over the upcoming months for us to be hitting all corners in the middle of Montgomery County. So I really look forward to our next stops. And I want to thank everyone for joining us here. And I promise we won't be, the next one won't be so close to my house. We'll make our way to the more ordinary impact. So, but since we're here in Limerick, I also want to address a man, a local member, a new instructor here, a new instructor, change in Limerick. Recently, three of us commissioners agreed to hold together a letter in support of the township supervisors. It circulated to Senator Pace, I think, and Senator State Representative Joseph Reese in support of the Ridge Pike Shore Expansion Project. This project will provide the much-needed upgrade to the aging shore system on sixty seven properties in the township. Recently, Limerick Township partnered with Ridge Pike Shore Committee to survey sixty seven impacted property owners. The goal was to assess their ability and willingness to contribute to the project. There was a lot of strong support for this project. One was built survey, other thirty seven of the property owners said they were able to contribute financially at this time. So our aim is to help Limerick Township support supervisors, save the state funding, offset the financial burden. We're hoping to have Senator Penny and Representative Reese support this project. And I know it's a very important initiative for our colleagues here in Limerick as well. So that's why we wanted to also have a letter of support along with the township supervisors. A few other things going on. In the planning mission, the Yonner Ridge Ridge Pike Shore Extension, there are several other local updates that might be of interest. I was recently at the site of the camp Laughing Waters up in Uhan over in Upper Perry Township. We've preserved over four hundred and fifty acres on the property to maintain camp, which Girl Scouts used. That was a combination of a lot of funding from the state, from the state to county and other resources. So that's a, that's a great save in preservation for the county acres. I think that was one of the biggest reasons for leaving us all here. We'll also be adding public access to the land via a two-mile easement on the southern part of the property. Like I said, this is the large, I don't know, the head, I said, one of the Montgomery County preservation projects since two thousand. And I know the planning commission, I know some of them are here as well this evening, worked really hard on, on that initiative. As a big supporter of beautiful trails and parks and a believer in the scouts, for all boys and girls, I'm really happy that we're able to make that happen. Our planning commission have also been leading the effort to complete the Schoolville River Trail, where four twenty two crosses Armored Hammer Boulevard and connects with Industrial Highway of Buzztown. Since there is a stretch of the trail there that's just under a mile long that we plan to open up for use next year. Once completed, this Schoolville River Trail with ten more than sixty miles connecting Philadelphia with Redding. Also speaking of connecting Redding, next Schoolville River Passenger Rail Authority, which I serve on, the board of, the board is already in work to restore the passenger rail between Redding and Philadelphia. The project has entered the Federal Railroad Administration Order ID Program, which is extremely important for us. So we will be developing a service development plan to get this project rolling. Amtrak will provide, as we hope and believe Amtrak will provide, the California is the best time will be an anchor station for Montgomery County. Also looking at a couple of other areas in the north, we know that Bus Town is definitely going to be one of the anchors. So we'll be making some. Probably inside, we're making full progress on that. And if everything keeps going the way we are, I hate playing games out there. But, you know, twenty twenty, I, twenty twenty five might be a really good spot to be celebrating that trail, Red Arms on it. And you already heard Commissioner Ryder about four twenty two and short updates. But here's what they want, I'd like to see the Punch Out friends here this evening. The Climb Street Bridge, which has been closed since two thousand and eight, I believe. And this has been one of my, my initiatives that falls to my heart, because I really want to get that one going as well. And as everything, everything keeps going the way we're planning, we should be entering the construction phase, probably late second quarter, probably more in the third quarter of this year. Which is another amazing proposition for us. Again, I want to thank the planning mission. They were trying to really get this project moving and acknowledge this was a mission. And they're doing everything possible with Dennis going within the next several months. And then also, I want to have a letter of commendation for Catherine Marie Boyle. I just want to take a few minutes to recognize Catherine. I don't, I think I saw Catherine. I just want to take a few minutes to recognize Catherine. I don't, I think I saw Catherine. You hear Catherine, there you are. Catherine just graduated Silicon Law from Montgomery County Community College, which folks will only smoke Commissioner Wyler spoke last week at the commencement. That was a lot of fun. That was, that was a great opportunity as well. But she will soon begin a year-long internship for young professionals in Germany. The program is a partnership between the US Department of State and the German, who's the start, I don't know, the German. And it's very selective. There were more than five hundred applicants, a hundred and fifty of those applicants were selected for interviews. And of that, seventy-five students from around the country were admitted into the program. And Catherine is one of those seventy-five, and she's the only one from Montgomery County that's elected to go with a year-long internship. So we are very proud to have one of our own representing us and this nation with this great program. So I know it's going to be an experience of a lifetime for Catherine, and I'm sure you have a bright future ahead. So we want to try to come up as well and recognize you for your output. Lastly, as mentioned, like we know Memorial Day is this weekend. I feel I'd love to be able to leave out courthouse tomorrow with planting with lights. And I know I got a couple, few other stops this weekend as far as planting this lights at a few different centers throughout. I know there's a lot of parades, cookouts, parties, whatever you want to call it, going on all weekend, celebrations. But through all that, I, I just hope that everyone takes a few minutes during that time to remember what Memorial Day is all about. And remember those guys that were there for us and thought, and over the years, that provided this country that we have today and give us all the opportunities that we had. So enjoy your cookouts, your parades, your celebrations and all that. But please just remember to take five minutes and celebrate those that are really hard to remember. And that includes my, my.
Your comments were much more memorable.
This is the first. I took that one thing that I wanted to point out. Connor, I don't know his name. So Connor just finished up the three week internship. He's a high school student too. I thank him for all his work with the team with Sarah and Judy. He's graduating November, June fifth. And he's going to Ohio State next year. So please, thank you.
Well, I thank you for going to Ohio State and as a Penn Stateer. I'm glad to be here. We thank all of us. Okay, next up, we have Emergency Medical Services Stop the Bleed, Dana. The David Brown. So I'm going to come down.
Next one, this is Albert, Albert Davy from representing the Montgomery County Ambulance Association and Albert's Ambulance. And he spent his job great demonstration on what's called Stop the Bleed. And it is EMS week. So this day, Thursday, is Stable Life Day. So support your local emergency medical services ambulance companies. And learn CPR, learn how to use an automatic external depressor, or learn how to stop bleeding in case of an emergency. So Albert, it's all yours.
Very cool. Good evening, everyone. So my name's Albert Davy. I'm a parent. I'm also the executive director of North Ambulance. The one of seventeen ambulances that provide nine-one-one EMS coverage to the county of Montgomery. All under the direction of Department of Public Safety. And so we take advantage of EMS week and ultimately today is Stop the Bleed Day within EMS week. It's our fiftieth year of celebrating the hundreds of providers that will come to your door at any time of day, through COVID, through whatever. We have, we've been a rough run. To that end, however, the idea is that when you call nine-one-one, an ambulance is coming. And we all know that there is a limited amount of time before the ambulance arrives. It's that nervous part, that, those minutes that feel like forever. So so understand, like CPR, we go do that, because that doesn't take any minutes. We're going to do this right now. So I can show you how simple this actually is. It's about excessive bleeding. Okay, so ultimately, all we have to do is three simple projects. There are the ABCs of Stop the Bleed. A is activate nine-one-one. And that's getting the help coming. Okay, I can't, if they're simulation, they don't help. Please make no calls down here, but they're already, they may arrive. But ultimately, once they're en route, you can get information from the dispatcher. They'll provide you what to do. Key is you have the knowledge and the tools to do it. In front of us have three items, basically just a single glass bag. It's called pressure dressing, and we'll talk about that, and ultimately putting on a tourniquet. Okay? Okay, one of them. Okay, simply put, first thing you do after you call nine-one-one is assess the problem. So grab the sterile pads. And all you're going to do is your basic four by fours, things you find in every first aid kit. When you tear them open, you're basically going to push on whatever the wound is and press direct pressure. If you hold that there, if you lift your hand up, the blood will rush back in and it won't work. You're going to hold direct pressure for five minutes. And that's all we're going to do. But patience not going to be comfortable. They're going to say, ah, it's going to hurt, obviously. But the idea is we're making it, that's a small bleed. And that's how we handle it. Now after that, take your other, take the pressure dressing. Now people, very few people happy, but all this is, is this dressing on a bandage. So when you open your first aid kit, you saw a bandage, you thought, ah, that's what I wrap my hand on? Nah, it's a pressure dressing. So now take that same thing. And you're basically going to place it on that wound you had. And you're going to push it down hard while wrapping. This gives you pressure. Over and you're pushing through that little vein, that little T there. Good. And you'll keep wrapping until it's tight. Each time pulling tightly and creating that. Once it's done, just keep wrapping it around. You're good. You don't have to hold it tight enough. And then just stuff it on the piece. And that's how the next part. Now, if you play the groupings, okay, we move to the last stage. The last one. Okay, these are becoming more popular. We do not, we're not afraid of these. We used to say that if you put it on, it was a big deal. It's not. We put these on all the time. And these are not, it's not about active shooters, it's not about those kinds of things. There's always going to be a lot of, no. The last time Albert has used these, we had two medical emergencies. The person had a body that had a shock, it's a threat. But it's been a very important part. So it's trying to get the pain part. The second part was when the person climbed the backstop, you had the fencing that's on the backstop with the baseball thing, they slid down and they called. Yeah, that was a good start. Very good. But the tourniquet is in itself very simple. All you have to do is basically open it up. Already comes, ready to look, right? Just slide that over the person's arm. I'll do it on me, they'll do it on that. They do it should tighten. And then you're just basically going to pull. So you pull it nice, then pull it long. And then you never, just wrap, pull this super tight. Now you're going to pull tight and pull back. So once we've got it on, we pull it tight. And then it grips on the metal. Right? You see how you do. Oh, you're, you're already in it. Perfect. Okay, so now all we're going to do is basically turn this thing, this wheel ass, turning it tighter and tighter. And basically you're cutting off the pipe line that's bleeding. So the bleed is here. You're able to turn it and then lock it in. And then take that gray piece and pull it across. Now, I mean, all that, you got it. Like that person's, if they're bleeding here, that will stop. And the higher, wherever the injury goes, you're going to put it as high on the arm or as high on the leg as possible. And that's how you turn it. You got it? You got, did that in the loop? You got it?
There we go.
And so it is that simple. Simply direct pressure, and if it bleeds through, go to the ice, a bandage dressing. And follow it up by putting the tourniquet on and tightening it. And then you just have to go to the trauma center within four hours. The good news is in Montgomery County, we got a whole mess of trauma center. We walk through. Exit station. You were, you were not going to have live blood from me.
All right. So next up on our agenda is our public comment section of our meeting. So there's two public comment sections. So for those that have never been to a board commissioner meeting, I'm just going to give a little instruction here. So for this public comment section, it's for matters appearing on today's agenda that the commissioners will consider at this meeting. Listed in items through out. And so you're limited and there's timer there. And I believe we have a sign up. So who do we have first for public comment? You have Jen there? Jen there? You have Jen? Last one we went to Jenny, um, so that's me.
Hi. This is actually just more of a question than a comment. I was looking at this, I have it on my, this big, long chart that you had on, well, attached to the agenda of, I guess these are oh, oh gosh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. It's Jenny Reiman Schneider. I'm in Lower Providence Township. Okay. Um, so I was just looking at the charts. Am I not talking close enough to the mic? I had a question. As you know, my family's been facing challenges with home health care, elder care, that kind of thing. I'm curious what this chart is. That's towards the bottom where you have a bunch of different home health services listed in home health services. And it says at the top certain hour expenditures. Is that what the county allot to those services for these agencies or these approved agencies? I'm just trying to understand what is, what is being allotted here, what this represents.
So we know this is a question that
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know. I know. I'm just, I'm just thinking that a lot of people might want to know that. So I just wanted to point it out. That was all, that's all I had for that. Thank you.
Next up we have Gary.
Thank you.
Ben, Ben Arthur? We have Gary? Next up we have Ben, we have Gigi, Helen, Muffet. Can you hear us?
Hi, I'm sorry. I had to unmute. I do apologize.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? No?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. Well, thank you commissioners for having this public meeting and for going around to the county. It is an important piece that community members really were lacking in the last few years. And thank you to the good people of Limerick for hosting this. It's really very generous. My comment this evening is on those receiving and generously receiving dollars to provide rapid housing and other forms of housing to those who are experiencing homelessness or a threat of homelessness across Montgomery County. My question and my comment is, I would encourage this county government to look into and form a commission on eviction diversion programs where, of course, we wouldn't need rapid housing if we actually didn't have the third highest eviction rate in the state. So an intervening portion is really something to consider as far as housing goes throughout the county. And that's my comment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Gigi.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tara Vasco of Lower Pots Grove Township. And my question is, is the Schuylkill River Trail connection part of the agenda this evening to comment on? So that would not be, okay. So, okay, thank you.
I mean, we have, just to answer Gigi's question, we have a whole program in place, a comprehensive program that addresses, you know, eviction, prevention and services. We certainly, Dr. William Moore had a couple of human services this year. So we can make sure to maybe for your question, we can get you some people off of those programs. But always open to other ideas. All right. Next up, I'm going to move on for the approval of our minutes. So I'm going to make a motion to approve May second, twenty-four minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Municipalities meeting in terms of I can make commissioner's call and vote comment. On favor by motion carries. Next up, have our one motions. So first up is the approval of applications for funding through the Monaco's funding grant program. And I'd like to send my add for our foundation mission up to talk to us when we're about that.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm assuming that all of the audience members are here to hear about this.
So is my question working?
No. It was just on. Hello?
We need one. We need a round talk there.
Hello, hello? Oh, there you go. Okay. Is that better? Okay, so I am here tonight to seek approval for the thirteen projects that we are recommending for funding for this year's round of Monaco twenty forty implementation grants.
And before you get started, I have to make a quick assessment of the agenda. So before you present the
Okay.
panel here. So I'd like to first make a motion to amend agenda item G three to add the reappointment of this cannabis, Montgomery County Conservation Dicket Board, if there was a second. Second, I can make commissioner's motion and vote comment. All in favor?
Nope, that's okay. Okay, so a quick background on the Monaco twenty forty implementation grant program. This is our ninth round of grants that we are implementing through our Monaco twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. The projects that receive funds build off of the themes and goals that are in our county comprehensive plan. This year, we have two point five million dollars of funds available with a maximum grant amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These are grants targeted at municipalities. They are our primary applicants, but a municipality can partner with a private or nonprofit organization. We'll see a good example of that in tonight's round of project announcements. The minimum local match for this program is twenty percent of the grant amount, or ten percent for some of our less resourced communities. Up until tonight, we've given one hundred and twenty-seven grants awarding to, I believe, fifty-three of our municipalities across the county for a total of fifteen point three million dollars. The average grant award is about a hundred and twenty thousand. This year, we received twenty-three new applications and four point two million in requests and are recommending thirteen grant awards. Okay, this is a map showing that geographic distribution. The yellow stars represent the award, the awards that we're recommending tonight. We evaluate projects on a variety of factors. We initially review them internally by MCPC staff. We then convene an interdepartmental group of, of staff from a couple of different departments, as well as members of our planning commission board to review the applications further and address potential concerns. And then come before you with our recommendations. Okay, I'm going to start off with Abington Township. Who will be receiving one hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars to fund improvements at the Ardsley Wildlife Sanctuary. Including ADA accessible pathways and addressing, address of runoff, Rosa runoff, sorry. College Full Borough will be receiving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund Uh, College Full Borough will be receiving $250,000 to fund a spur to the Perkyomen, uh, trail that's through what is called Bums Hollow. Hatfield Township is receiving $200,000 toward the construction of a stormwater basin at Clemens Park, uh, where some additional lands were recently acquired to expand this park's facilities. Uh, Lower Gwinnett Township is receiving $250,000 to the Pennlin Train Station Trail Connection. This is a project that will connect the train station to Penn Ambler Park and the mixed-use development of Ambler Yards. There's currently no safe way for a pedestrian to, to access these facilities. Uh, I'll keep going. Uh, Lower Marion Township is receiving $250,000 toward a solar installation project at Leddington Library. This will, uh, ultimately install solar panels both on the roof of one of the buildings as well as on the adjacent parking lot. Lower Salford Township is receiving 113,650 dollars, uh, toward the Yoder Road Sidewalk Connections Project. Uh, this involves the construction of new sidewalk where the concrete is known, uh, to connect Indian Creek Middle School with several other nearby amenities. Uh, Pottstown Borough is receiving $250,000 toward the, uh, sidewalk replacement and tree protection project. Uh, this will fund the rehab and replacement of sidewalks in thirty-three locations around the core of the business district and some of the, uh, surrounding residential streets where sidewalks have been damaged by street trees, uh, pushing up the, the sidewalk that's there. Gabby, are you the one that's growing? Oh, that makes so much more sense. All right, uh, next up, Red Hill Borough is receiving 229,230 dollars toward, uh, parks improvement project that would fund upgrades to two parks, Red Hill Park and the Bio Retention Garden. Upgrades include ADA parking spaces, sidewalks and some paths and ramps. Uh, next, Royersford Borough is receiving 73,500 dollars toward improvements at Victory Park. Uh, this focuses on upgrading the park's infrastructure, including, uh, new picnic tables and benches, uh, new pathways and, uh, ADA surfaces be, uh, below the playground equipment that's there. Trap Borough is next with, uh, $250,000 toward the Speaker's House Restoration. Uh, this was an application that Trap Borough submitted on behalf of Historic Trap, uh, who is looking to complete the interior renovations to the Speaker's House by 2026 to be fully open to the public for the America 250 celebrations. Uh, next is Upper Moreland Township, who is, uh, receiving $225,000 toward redevelopment of Woodlawn Park. Uh, this is, uh, uh, this will help implement the recently adopted Park Master Plan and will assist with extensive plantings, stormwater management, benches and a USGS Historic Marker and Plaza as the township works towards this park's redevelopment. Next is White Marsh Township, receiving 228,552 dollars toward improvements at Spring Mill Junction, which is adjacent to the Septa Train Station, as well as the county's Schuylkill River Trail uh, and some county-owned parklands. This will focus on enhanced safety with upgraded crosswalks, um, and, uh, more visible pathways and a pedestrian and bicyclist plaza off to the side. Uh, next and last, actually, Wood Payne Township is receiving $10,374 toward bike fix stations and bike racks, which will be installed at several township parks and open space areas. Uh, so that is a total of thirteen grants for a total of $2,481,951. Uh, next steps for us is that once these grants are approved, uh, we move forward with, uh, providing funding agreements to the municipalities. They get three years to complete these projects. And you can see the impact these have locally with, with nine years of projects behind us. We've got a variety of different, uh, successes and wins, uh, including the Pico Corridor Trail that was mentioned across the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Abby. I'd like to make the motion to, so, motion number one, a subscribe, I'm Stan, uh, we were, uh, he's in a second. Second by Commissioner Bell, any more comments? You're done. We need to vote, all in favor, all in, I, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the Commissioner's appointment to the Montgomery County Agricultural and Conservation Department Board. And so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dominic, uh, Berisies as a farmer representative to Montgomery County Agricultural and Conservation Board. The term begins immediately and expires on May 23rd, 2027. Twenty point seven, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current newly adopted bylaws. Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? There are none, all in favor, all in, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner's appointment, uh, and reappoint, Commissioner's reappointment to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Conservation District. So I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint Michael, Michael Potter as a farm director to serve the remaining term of Elizal Lawbridge that is expected to expire on December 31st, 2024. And to reappoint Chris Kennevan and Sarah Earlton as public directors. And to reappoint Ben Myers as a farm director for the Board of Directors of Montgomery County Conservation District who will serve terms that begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2027. And to serve as a player of the county commissioners and in accordance with the State Conservation District law. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? All in favor, I, motion carries. Uh, next up, Commissioner's appointment and reappointments to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I'd like to make a motion that Sandra Jenkins has been appointed for Jonathan Ryan's reappointment to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for terms to begin immediately and to expire on May 23rd, 2027. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the currently duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second? Second, and. Second by Commissioner Bell, I'll be about to go, all in, all in favor, all in, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner's reappointments to the Montgomery County Transportation Authority. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Tom Forward, um, and Alex, um, ooh, that's a couple. For, for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2028. And to reappoint John Kennedy, for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2029. The Montgomery County Transportation Authority and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioner in accordance with the current, uh, duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bell, any more comments? Moving on to a vote, all in favor, all in, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner's reappointments to the Montgomery County Open Space Board. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Michael Stokes of the Montgomery County Open Space Board for terms to begin immediately and to expire on May 23rd, 2029. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the currently duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? All in favor? I, uh, motion carries. Um, next up, the Commissioner's appointments to the Board of Trustees of the Montgomery County Community College. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the lead statement to the Board of Trustees of the Montgomery County Community College for terms to begin immediately and to expire on May 23rd, 2027. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? Moving on to a vote, all in favor? I, motion carries. Next up, I'd like to invite Catherine Helen off, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to review our comments.
Thank you, commissioners, and good evening. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a four-page document dated May 22nd, 2024 with a timestamp of 10:45 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Thank you, Katie. I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 23rd, 2024 personal presentation that has been given by Ms. Catherine Helen. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? Uh, moving on to a vote, all in favor, all in, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, advertisement of bids in RFPs, Montgomery County, exhibit A. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids in RFPs for Montgomery County as seen on attached exhibit A. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bell, any more comments? There are none, all in favor? I, motion carries. Next up, advertisement of bids in RFPs Southeast PA Regional Task Force, exhibit C. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisements of bids and RFPs for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force attached exhibit C. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bell, any more comments? There are none, we can all vote, all in favor? I. I. That's a good, motion carries. Orders of contract, Montgomery County, exhibit C, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract awards amendment and renewals for Montgomery County attached exhibit C. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maitreja, any more comments? Moving on to a vote, all in favor, all in, motion carries. Uh, next up, orders of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force, exhibit D. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts awards amendments and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force as seen on attached exhibit D. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bell, any more comments? There are none, all in favor? All in. Motion carries. So next up, we have General's comments. And the community sort of comment section, um, it's limited to three minutes. And speakers may comment on matters that are, are, or will be, or may be before the Board of Commissioners. And so all public comments must be, not that, and only to county business. Who do we have, um, public? Karen Malone?
Hey, um. My name's Kier Maloney, Lower Providence Township. Thank you guys for being up here. Thanks for coming out. This is good stuff. Um. So we have some stuff going on Lower Providence. I'm sure you guys have heard. Um, I just had a question for Win, Mrs. Winder?
Winder.
Winder.
Thank you for that.
Well, Kier, imagine that model like, bro. So you made a comment when you guys had the, uh, uh, I think it was Normandy Farms, that, uh, the townships, um, it's sad the way that we responded with RHD trying to come in, the way that they came in, um. And you said that the townships and municipalities are going to have to do their fair share. My question is this, we have, we have a county prison in Lower Providence. We have a rehab, which now is an acute psychiatric ward there as well. Few weeks ago, someone actually got out of that, took four cops to get them back there. We have a group home, um, about a month ago, uh, my cousin walked out her front door of someone naked, toes to, to the head from the group home. My question is, who gets to say what our quota is when we've done enough? It's my, and I know you, you're probably not going to answer the question. That's fine. Um. But our fair share, who gets to say what each township's fair share is? And then who gets to say, you're at your quota, you guys have done enough? Because the things that are being said, um, and it's also in defense of you, there has been some, people get emotional on one of them, but some of the stuff that they said about the habits. I had nine years clean, March 11th. I had nine years clean. Thanks. And I'm, I'm just saying that to say this, um, it took a lot of years and a lot of pain. And what it came down to was bad choices on my part. Um. So i- i- they keep dressing this up like it's going to be rainbows and roses and it's not because I've lived that lifestyle. I know what it is. The mayor in Philly was Mayor Parker, when they cleaned out Kensington on, on May 8th. He, um, he did an interview and he said, I can't believe she said this, because this doesn't work for me. Um, she doesn't really have a plan. They're flying the airplane as they build it. Um, we live in a great area. Uh, Montgomery County is, it's a, it's a great area to live in. So my thing is, and a lot of people want to know, we're not against helping people, but for, to have something ran down our throat, that i- i- it's not, that's not what it is. So my question, and I guess you got my email, right?
I can get, yeah, I'll make sure I have your email, but I'll, I'll respond briefly to, to your comments. So, so first, um, nine years clean, that's awesome. So I can only imagine what that journey would like, uh, to, to get to nine years clean and sober. Um, and I'm empathetic because my brother, uh, is early in his recovery and, uh, the journey to get him to a place of accountability, uh, and ownership of his actions and renewal in his life has been a challenging one. And so what I would say is, um, I can't even, I, I, you know, I, I, I think you're quoting, um, probably an article that was written about housing, housing summit. Uh, but what I was referencing is that we want all municipalities to try and step up and help us lift up our most vulnerable residents. And so I recognize, um, that Lower Providence is a great place to live, um, and I know that, uh, there's, you know, we have our, our public safety campus, we have a prison there, we have Eagle Hill Hospital. So I certainly recognize, um, you know, the feedback about, uh, bringing a transitional housing community to Lower, Lower Providence. And so our goal, or my goal, I don't want to speak for my colleagues in there, I should say, say something here, is that every municipality plays a role in lifting their most vulnerable friends and neighbors up. Because it's not just drug addicts, criminals that are heading up on the street. Um, a lot of our friends and neighbors are one paycheck away from not being able to, to pay their rent. And so we're trying to challenge the status quo, think of innovative solutions. We're looking nationally. Um, but I certainly, when it's right in your backyard, I, I am empathetic to some of the concerns that neighbors have about having a transitional housing community. But we have nowhere for people that are homeless to go. So we're just trying to do our best to identify communities that will step up. And that's, any, any additional thoughts?
I, I was just going to say, and I agree with what you're saying. You know, unfortunately, this is a very complex issue, um, and there's many different, uh, pieces to that issue when it comes to drug addiction home, uh, associated to homelessness, why, why people are where they are. Um, but it's a great question, you know, because we do ask, our, our goal is that, you know, all communities, where it can, uh, be able to try to do something or do their fair share. It's what's stated before. Uh, I don't know, there, I don't have an answer either to what your fair share is about. And I totally understand when we talk about whole problems and everything that's already found in lower province, uh, in your area. Um, and you know, one could argue that whole province has done their fair share. They've stepped on it. They've done everything they put for their community. Um, but I, I, you, you said one thing. I just want to make sure it's clear. The county isn't, uh, the one that's pursuing this project. It's a company that's working with the local council supervisors. So, um, that's where the facility can be. The facility, if approved and passed the bill, then yes, then the county has a, a plan to eventually utilize that facility. But there's a whole process that have to go through, uh, at the local level. You have to work with council supervisors, uh, make sure you share any concerns that as well.
You know, if you go to some of the elected leaders in, uh, whether it's other counties or any township, uh, there's still assistance out there that these are people, like, these people are not from here. Uh, but if everybody thinks that, then they're getting ready for that. So if people are silly, saying, oh, all these people are from Alfa, or the people are, uh, in. So if people are still saying, oh, all these people are from outside, or the people are, uh, in Lower Providence, kind of say, these people are from elsewhere. Um, it just, it's, it's always trying to push, basically as you said, with the quote mentioned, but push the, you know, the obligation, uh, to actually tackle the issue of homelessness to someone else. And I think what we feel is that, uh, if there are communities and municipalities that are willing to step up and take action, because the cost of housing is a crisis nationally. It's, it's a crisis everywhere, and there needs to be more housing available. Uh, and I think our role in the county is how do we, uh, support those advocates and municipalities that are doing something, whether it's on the sister housing. And that, and that's a conversation that is a priority for all of us, is, is how can the county be supportive of those municipalities that are taken in?
So I guess my question is this.
Okay.
All right, it won't be, but you said the count, the, the people that are willing, that we, we stood up when we said we're not, we're done. So I just, when it comes up, I'd just like some representation.
Thanks for your comments. Next up, Jay Brumman?
Evening, I just wanna, uh, I am, uh, part of the Ridge Pike Sewer Project. And I wanna say, I wanna say thank you to Limerick Township for all the work they've done, their engineers. Um, Joe Cerisi, who got us the, uh, the monies for the project engineering, which is all in, in place. And your folks' support of it, and hopefully with all of us together, we can get together and finally get some sewer to the, uh, western part of the township, which is, uh, desperately needed. So a thank you to everybody that's helped us get this far, and hopes we can see it to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth Sheila Dugan?
Um, moved to Pottstown fifteen.
You can just state your, your name.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sheila Dugan, um, we're from Pottstown.
Okay.
Um, I moved to Pottstown fifteen years ago with my husband and my five kids, age two to eleven. At the time, we knew our neighbors, we loved our community, and we never locked our doors because we certainly never felt unsafe in our own house. Today, we have more than fifty-five plus sober houses in our town. Most of them are not registered. Two of them are next door to me. One of those housed a rapist that I found out about online. I have three daughters in my house. Many of these sober houses, after talking to many people and working with many clients that have been in them, are nothing more than moneymakers. They are not helping those that are in need. We own a small business in town, and on daily basis, we see more and more of these social issues. Sober house residents are not patronizing the downtown businesses. The homeless solicit our customers. When our car was broken into by an eighteen-year-old who stole thousands of dollars from us, he got nothing. He got two years probation, he had to hand in his guns to the district attorney and had nothing more than to stay away from us. We got nothing. Took us a long time to fix the business that he stole from. I always hoped as my children grew up that they would be happy to come into town, to the house that they grew up in, and share their memories. Right now, the younger generation is leaving. Good people who can afford to get out are leaving. The schools are riddled with issues, and as long as we continue to be the dumping ground, we will only get worse. I'm here today to ask the commissioners to please start looking into helping get other communities involved and take a part of their share. Because we have too much, and we've had too much. And we need to make changes so that we feel safe again in our homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Doug Slick?
Good evening. Doug Slick, thirty-year resident of Pottstown. Thanks for the local itinerary, right, um, local meeting, put it that way. And the user-friendly time, obviously a very, um, welcome initiative. Uh, housing is a human rights. I appreciate all the comments you made both tonight and in the past, commissioners. You're obviously on the right track, um, in trying to address this issue. Um, specifically that we have neighbors who are living in the woods and on the streets. We have multiple encampments of unhoused citizens in Pottstown, and I know you're aware. Um, housing first works, so we need to get these people into housing. That's the first thing that needs to happen. Any place in the country and truly around the world that has tried to address this issue without housing first has failed. So that is definitely the first thing for us to do. A, a tough ask, as you've discussed already tonight. Most of these neighbors have local ties. Uh, their family is nearby, they have therapists, they have healthcare professionals, they have jobs. Many of these people work jobs. Uh, some of them, two jobs. They just can't afford to live where they are now, in terms of, uh, the rental of apartments. When you're in that situation, survival depends on not having your tent, or your bike stolen, or your shoes, or your phone, uh, or being removed from your support group. Uh, and so it's a big ask of them to say, get on this bus and let's drive you across the county. Uh, and, um, attractive as that may be for a solution, and it could be a partial solution, I know it's been discussed. Um, we need a local solution as well, uh, because, uh, those are really hard asks of, of those folks. Um, the, um, point in time, uh, count was released. This is a, as you know, a federally mandated, um, procedure that occurs, uh, the last month, uh, last week of January. Uh, it's limited to a six-hour period on a random day. Um, it's not the most significant, uh, most scientific, um, sorry, the most scientific, um, study, but, uh, it did show that homeless families and households increased, uh, from last year to this year. Uh, individuals from two hundred sixty-three last year to three hundred this year. And, um, families from three fifty-seven to four thirty-five this year. Uh, there is a racial component to these numbers as well, in that, um, although only ten percent of the county identify themselves as black Americans, forty-four percent of those counted as unhoused in our county were black Americans. The total number of beds for these folks has increased, so that's a great thing. Um, and it was able to, in, in the process, decrease the number of unhoused folks. But I would just note, uh, in closing, that, um, those beds were ninety-two percent full, pardon me, ninety-two percent full in twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-four, they were ninety-nine percent full. So if those numbers were hotel rooms, and I was a, a hotel owner, I would buy more hotels. I would put more people in housing. So that's what we need. Thank you for your time.
So I'll just say, you know, I know there's many friends and neighbors here from, from the Pottstown area, and I think the two, um, public comments speakers for for lending their voice to some of the concerns and, uh, sharing some suggestions in terms of how that works. Commissioner Mekija and I were at an encampment in Pottstown today. I know Commissioner DeBello was also, uh, toured the encampments. Um, like, one of them actually lives in a recovery house in Pottstown, and he's driving, uh, with, with, with that, that particular sort of living community. Uh, but we know that housing first works. Uh, we follow a housing first model in Montgomery County. The challenge is, there's no traditional housing, um, places for people to go. Right? And so that's where, when I suggest and comment, right, that we, we cannot do it alone, right? We need a federal or state delegation along with local municipalities to support us in coming up with tangible solutions that will both, like, protect the revitalization of places like Pottstown and Narstown, but also provide programming to lift up our most vulnerable. And so like Commissioner DeBello said, it's really complex, as I've learned over the last year. Um, but our housing summit, uh, we, we have real ideas, and, uh, we hope to, uh, to challenge the status quo, move the needle, uh, moving, getting some, some shelters online. So, uh, so being from the Narstown area, I certainly understand, uh, the sentiments of the Pottstown community.
Well, that's kind of the direction to you.
Not yet.
So, I'm not sure. Traditionally, initiatives on housing have been something that the federal, because it is quite costly. And, uh, it's really important for us, I think, at the county level to have a plan that we can propose, uh, at the city level and really put for better action when it comes to putting real resources behind housing. So that's something that I've been really looking forward to working with, our state delegation, they have fourteen billion dollars surplus right now. So really, I think, encouraging, uh, the, the kind of act to help not just Montgomery County, but any, any of the commonwealth that's struggling with this.
I was, I was gonna say that, um, the one thing that, because I know there's a lot of comments on this, uh, people have a lot, I'm sorry, but I've been in Pottstown a lot, talking with a lot of different groups and organizations, and I've mentioned I've walked the encampments, um. The one thing that I, I can say with confidence is, the three commissioners, we all agree, and we've been working on looking at, uh, potential solutions, uh, steps forward. Um, we may not necessarily agree on everything that we think may or may be first or second or whatever, but we're working through that. Um, I mean, I, I've dove into this topic, uh, very, very deep and, uh, doing a lot of research, I've talked to a lot of different organizations, I've talked with, uh, um, food banks, and I've talked with police chiefs, and, and really, really trying to get a, a full understanding. Uh, because, yes, we're here in Limerick tonight, which I'm really excited about. Um, but, and Pottstown's right up the road, it's, you know, ten minutes away. And I know, we know, uh, what we're confronted with there, but that's just one piece of the county. Uh, we do have a, a large issue as well in the worst towns around parts of the county as well. Um, and, you know, we do have shortage of, of, uh, transitioned bed. And one of the things that we're talking about is, we need to put a spreadsheet together and maybe possibly use a, a uh, software package that will track beds, whether full or empty, where we can get people moving quickly. Um, I know that there's, we're gonna talk about additional, uh, program centers, uh, going into next year as well. So it, there is a lot going on, it may not work it sometimes, and it may not be going at the pace that we would like or believe in. Uh, my personality is I like to move quick and get stuff done, you know? And I'm also, I mean, I, I'd like to see things happen. Actually, our HHS department is working very hard, uh, trying to do everything they can to ensure that, uh, all of these individuals, they are our people, they're our free people. And, and yes, some may come from outside of Montgomery County, we don't know. Sure, some may, I'm not gonna say none, none do, none don't. Uh, but I've talked with some, uh, people, and they've, you know, they've been longtime residents of Montgomery County, and they've been in their situation, um, and living in retirement for three to four years. Um, so we do have a lot of residents that ended up on our side or ended up with additions that, uh, we also did help, uh, which is a good thing. So we're gonna continue to focus on this. Um, and hopefully, uh, I always say that, I, I hope that, you know, we're not talking about this again in four years, but we are working diligently on trying to figure out, you know, what is the best path forward. But really, that's coming from, uh, from communities. Um, you know, trying to find places that would be sensitive to some type of housing, because that's, that's, that is a big piece of, of the solution. So we all have to come together as a community and try to figure this out as well.
Janice Sheridan?
Hi. Janice Sheridan, Skipback Township. Um, I'm just confused, and I would like, um, answers some way. I mean, I'm not gonna ask you right now to answer, but Narstown State Hospital was closed way back when. They, they had no plan for these people, so they sent them out on the streets. You had a twenty twenty demolition of Allentown State Hospital. Um, you have a prison in Narstown that they're talking about demolishing. I guess what I, and you have illegal immigrants flying in to Philadelphia Airport and sent to Philadelphia by the plane's fall. So to say that we are going to be, we have to take care of our residents, I agree. We have to take care of our residents. But who is going to make sure that they are our residents? Because it's, most of us here, and I'm gonna point Kier, Kier Malone, nicest guy you'll ever meet, most generous guy you'll ever meet. I mean, paid for, uh, we went out and he paid for a, a serviceman's meal because he just thanked him for his service. So we're that type of people. I have taken a nephew who was thrown out of a recovery house, a nephew I hadn't seen in fifteen years, just called me up and said, I need help. I said, okay, come on, and I had him for two, for two weeks, and he drank every ounce of alcohol that was in my house. I still kept him, laid down the law, and he now today, thank God, has turned, has become clean. But my point is, illegal immigration is not what we want. And yet it's being forced on us, and now it's being forced. Our taxes are gonna go up because of these things. We, and Skipback, all right, it's state-owned property, so we can't help it, but they have a delinquent school that they just one day announced at a school board meeting. We, we have a delinquent school and, and on the Greaterford Prison site, and it's under the Perkium and Valley School District pervia, which means we're gonna have to pay for it. Um, I just think there has to be some kind of assurance that the people we're taking care of are our people. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Seth Orwin?
Thank you for your consideration. I'm actually from Berks County, but your county will directly affect what I'm doing since uh, Commissioner Tom DeBello is on the School River Passenger Rail Authority. Now, I've been following this for the last two and a half years. And this new authority was formed several years ago. It's a legal authority, it affects us all. They are hiring people, they are, uh, going to put in a supposedly a passenger rail. Unfortunately, I'm asking here to ask you to reconsider your support for this. We are talking eight hundred million dollars to put in a rail system. There have been seven surveys since twenty-two thousand and three. And at best, marginal, that this rail would be successful, if at all. They are spending money, they have hired attorneys, they have, um, put in media, they have a website, they've done all this. And nowhere have they put a, put it up for us to vote whether we like it or not. This is a direct tax on you, Chester County and my, and Berks County. Now, I'm questioning, why should we do this? None of the studies I've read, all seven, say it's possible. Now, if you go back and look at what's going on here, Amtrak has, is losing one billion dollars a year. And we're supposed to be associated with this. Stepda loses one million dollars a day, and that affects us here. What do we think this little railroad's gonna do? Because railroads under four hundred miles are not successful. Look it up, I've done my homework. Look it up, I've done my homework. This means that this is just going to be another tax upon us. So I'm here to ask the people on this commission and the people here, given the American economy, the deficit at thirty trillion dollars, the growing cost of the illegals, which this woman just talked about, the medical system, the schools, the poor, we haven't even taken care of the veterans. And you're asking to spend eight hundred million dollars for a passenger rail? And if they look at their forecast, we're talking maybe three or four thousand rides a day. This is not a high, high-volume place. So I'm here to ask you, please, to reconsider what you're doing and not support this. I came here because I can't get time up in Berks County. They don't, they don't have public meetings for this. So I'm asking you here to stop School River Passenger Authority now, because it's just gonna be a tax on us again. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Lutz Souch.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for allowing this public comment. My name is Joshua Souch, I'm the chairman of Board Supervisors for Douglas Township for quite a long time now. I'm on my twenty-fourth year of public service, either as an employee, appointed official, or an elected official, both at a local level, county level, and state level. And I'd just like to thank the board for coming out here on the western end of Montgomery County. I think everybody here in the room probably knows where Abington and Lower Marion are, but very few people from that direction know where Douglas Township is, or New Hanover, or Limerick, or Pottstown, unless they're from down here. So I just wanted to remind the commissioners how important it is to make sure that you're connected to our end of, of the county. I don't know if the commission knows this, but one of the first commissioners for Montgomery County was actually from Douglas Township, from the western end of Montgomery County. So I would just ask that the, the commission keeps in mind how, how valuable and how important this end of, of the county is. That being said, I would also like to invite the county commissioners. Next Friday, June, I believe it's the third, at eleven AM, on behalf of the Douglas Township Board of Supervisors, Lehigh Valley Health Network is opening a micro hospital. I believe it's the first hospital to be, to be built since Einstein Hospital in East Norton, which was about a decade ago. And then they are doing the ribbon cutting and official opening ceremony for that. So I would love it if the board and any other elected officials from Montgomery County would like to attend at all and, and check that out. And again, I thank you for, for everything that you're doing. The only, I believe it's, whatever, whatever next Friday, not this coming one, the following one, June seventh, I think. No, then it's the following, it's June seventh, and you're correct, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I am too. The only other comment I wanna make, I wanna thank the commission and remind them how important it is, I know that there was an EMS study that was commissioned, that's still ongoing, I don't know if Dave Brown's still here, I know that's still happening. EMS funding and staffing throughout the whole county is at a crisis level, as you know. And that study is going to show things that we've known has been happening for years and it's just been ignored or put on the back burner. Unfortunately, it's an unfunded state mandate that falls back to municipalities, and it, and it just cannot continue in that manner. It's just financially impossible for municipalities to provide that resource and that service to the community. And health and well-being and safety of our, of our residents is obviously our first charge as supervisors and also as, as the county commissioners. And one of the most important things with that is to provide proper emergency medical services. So I'd just like to make sure that when that study does come out, that the commission doesn't forget it, and that they reach out to a lot of the local leadership in the municipalities that are being directly affected by that, and make sure you get some input from the community and, and, you know, we're, we're happy to volunteer and give us as much time as you guys need from us. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, just that one, for those who don't know, one of the first votes we took on our taxes was actually up to a hundred percent property tax, probably for all EMS responders. So that was, I think we all did it before, they were bipartisan vote, and all, that first seven days.
Thank you. My name is Greg Puzak, I'm from Limerick Township. I'm here today representing a community group called the Limerick Community Alliance. My colleague, who is going to be speaking, is gonna be representing the Limerick Township Historical Society. And what we'd like to see is, we'd like to see an update from the county on the America Two Fifty efforts. The information that's on the, the county's website is, is dated, and we haven't found anything additional in terms of what the county is planning on doing to celebrate the two hundred and fifty anniversary of the United States. The Limerick Community Alliance is an organization whose mission is to support and plan local community events. And one of the things that we are engaged in is helping plan activities that celebrate Limerick Township's three-hundredth anniversary, which is the same year, twenty twenty-six. So we're very interested in coordinating with the county on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary events as well as ours. And so we're looking for further information and how to get moving on that.
Thank you for raising that. We'll make sure the website's updated and our team's working on those, those plans. So.
Thank you.
It's okay. Hi, Jenny Reiman Schneider, Lower Providence Township. And thank you again for doing this in the evening. It is helpful that there's a bus who have trouble taking off work to be at a lot of the meetings on. Anyway, first I'd like to thank Commissioners Wyder and DiBello and their staff for reaching out to me regarding my family's plight in relation to the horrifying and abrupt extraction of my mother from her home. It's interesting, we're talking about so much homelessness, and we had a person that had a place to live and she was taken out of it. Under the guise of protection by an agency that is tasked with providing services to seniors, our current county's current guardianship system is a travesty, and our county agencies are able to ignore the law and the well-being of our seniors without repercussions. I've been bringing this to everyone's attention for the last two years, and I finally feel like I'm being heard. My mother's life has been destroyed beyond repair, but my hope is that others facing the same fate can be helped before it's too late, and that those responsible are held accountable. I would like the public to know that a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars go to social workers, court clerks, judges, lawyers, sheriffs, and other personnel, as well as general court costs that could be avoided by proper mediation and referrals, rather than focusing, forcing vulnerable, vulnerable adults into unwarranted and harmful guardianships. Everyone should be aware that anyone can suggest ownership of another human being by way of guardianship, and anyone can be a guardian. The requirements are shockingly minimal, the oversight is basically non-existent, and there are no fines or other consequences for failure to act in the owned person's behalf. The same is true for the high-paid lawyers that these owned persons are forced to use and that the county continues to pay after the owned person's resources are depleted. As an example, multiple county agencies spent months on the taxpayer dole, trying to prove that my disabled brother, with whom my mother had shared his home his entire life and had added on to most of her accounts long before any cognitive decline, was improperly using her funds. This was simply an attempt to vilify my family, an attempt to justify the stranger ownership of my mother, after which they used her money instead of the son for whom she intended it. Please be wary, please speak to me in part if anybody is going through this, before you reach out to county agencies, because they have ripped their family apart by this stranger ownership that could have been avoided. The majority of people whose freedoms, homes, and businesses are taken over by unwelcome strangers or elderly, disabled, or both. I've asked the county, among other things, that agency personnel be trained to understand the law and their actual duty to abide by such. For example, review of least restrictive alternatives, alternatives has been Pennsylvania law for some time, yet there is a blatant disregard for this legal requirement. The harm caused to overlooked ones by such disregard is immense and irreversible. There's much more to the story, which I'm happy to share, and I look forward to continuing to work with the commissioners to correct this law system. Thank you.
Thank you for the fifteen minutes. I just wanna thank you all for being here tonight. It means a lot to have you in the one hundred and forty-sixth district in my hometown of Limerick. I feel like we've gone back twenty years with DiBello sitting back at the table at Limerick Township. I feel like a kid again, still younger than you, Tom. Anyway, but I think it's important to good government, to see that good government is happening here, that the county commissioners have recognized the western part of the county, especially here in Limerick Township, that they're here working with our township, and as a state representative, we all work hand in hand to get things done. So I didn't wanna take a lot of time, but I wanted to thank the three of you for being here, all the county officials that brought you here. Limerick Township, thank you for hosting this, and I look forward to continuing working together to move the state forward. Thank you.
Matthew?
All right, my name is Kasper Matthews, I'm from Franktonon Township, I lived there for over twenty-five years. So I have a question about the drop boxes. I know election, you know, is around the corner. For primary, drop boxes was twenty-four-seven. Is this gonna change for general election? I have this question for, for the commissioners, I mean, do you guys?
Well, it's definitely something I brought up. Talking about it again over summer, won't necessarily feel the need that they need to be open twenty-four-seven, but it's a conversation I think I will be having.
Okay. Yeah, I've got one question. So, um, another question, follow up. I saw drop boxes is.
This is not a question and answer session, so you give your comments, and then we can get back to you.
Okay. The, um, I saw the Dropbox existed because pandemic, so pandemic is over, why we still have drop boxes? Yeah. Why, why we have it? Yeah, use of the mail. I mean, there's not, there's. Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just, you know, I saw the, we are trying to achieve election transparency, right? Drop boxes, and first of all, twenty-four-seven, that, you know, we know what happens in the dark. So that's first of all. So we don't want to have, we don't want, you know, like, twenty-four-seven, that's for sure. And second of all, I, what is, you know, it is necessary to have drop boxes, there is, there's mailbox, and there, there's no pandemic.
Okay. That, we, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just respond, this is a election, which is very great, so. The vote by mail actually was passed before the pandemic, it was passed up by the largest vote in twenty nineteen, I believe. So that was before the pandemic, and, and that's not why that process was created. So the problem with drop boxes, there are, I think, under twenty in the county right now, and there are six hundred USPS postal boxes that people also use to, to go under their ballots. And what's better about drop boxes than the postal box is that it is something that is owned by the county. And so when you put your ballot, your, and the envelope in the drop box, you're giving it directly to the cattle, and it's surveilled twenty-four-seven to the comment, and we all know what happens at night, you have to do what is the recording on a camera, because everyone has drop boxes, it's monitored. So it's secure and it's in a way more reliable, because you're not going through the postal system. And so we had an issue this, this year where the postal service lost the ballot for a certain period of time, and anytime you send out hundreds of ballots, that's gonna happen to a certain number of ballots, right? But the good thing about a drop box is if you get your ballot in there by eight PM on election day, you can guarantee that it will be counted, because you're giving it to the cattle. And that's much better than if you, for example, put it in the mailbox, and there could be a postal delay. So that's the main reason, uh, they are preferred by many people and will continue to use.
Dr. Vernon Brown? Okay.
I didn't pronounce my name, obviously, but I thought it was what, for ten, not.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Colbrath, I'm from Norristown, Pennsylvania. I'm not sure if I'm at the right place to address a street renaming proposal, is this the right place?
Depends on the street, but. Give us the name, we can help you do.
Okay. I'm here, I'm Olympic medalist Josh Colbrath's cousin, and I was wondering if I could, if Norristown can honor his, his name with a street renaming in Norristown somewhere, especially at the corner of Coolidge and Coolidge Boulevard and Brown Street, because he went to, he attended the high school there, where that, where his track career had developed there, and he became an Olympian right after that. So I was just wondering to recognize and honor him, if Norristown can honor my cousin with a street renaming.
I'm from Norristown, and I do know your cousin, I ran track for Norristown High School. So we'll facilitate getting you in contact with the right people to begin those discussions. So just make sure our team has your contact information.
Okay, who do I, who should I see about that?
We have a team over here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, Matt Flynn. Matt Flynn?
Hi, I'm Matt Flynn, live in Upper Marion, and I'm here representing a property over on West Ridge Pike, in reference to the sewer. Building over there was built back in two thousand and seven with an agreement with information from the township, then sewer, board, that sewer was soon to come, and that was seventeen, eighteen years ago. So what I would ask the board is any support and comfort you can give to Representative Cerise in his search for money in Pennsylvania? Much appreciated, and thank you for coming tonight.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you ever heard of, we started reading off with this special, we're supporting a project, and we're sending letters off in support to Representative Cerise, and send a big call to, you know, encourage them to do a bank account with the project, to extend that sort of line.
Good evening, I'm Tara Vassell from Lower Pots Grove. Thank you for letting me come back and make a public comment. You had mentioned the Schuylkill River, and I was just on my dragon boat on Saturday, and the comments were they are afraid to use the trail because of the people coming out of the woods and the scary structures that are on the river. I was shocked, we haven't been upriver all season since last year, and there's buildings on the river. on the river, on the beautiful Skookel River, that we are now uncomfortable going on the trails. We used to put the boat in, bike ride up. And so I wanted to bring attention to that for the safety of the people who use the trail. More important than the people camping out where it's not a campsite. And just seeing the common sense, we've taken the rails away to create bike trails that we're no longer comfortable riding on, to then pay billions of dollars to create a fast rail. I don't understand the logic. We have empty municipal buildings that we're taking down that we could use for housing for people who, who need a home. So why don't we renovate these buildings instead of tear them down? Just because it was a hospital doesn't mean it can't be temporary housing, or it was an old prison doesn't mean it can't be renovated to accommodate housing. What are we going to do with the property once we take down these empty buildings? And, and we have so many empty buildings sitting around anyway. They close a grocery store to build a new grocery store, and the old grocery stores, it's empty for twenty years where why? Why couldn't we have just renovated it? I just want common sense leadership in our expenses, please. I work very hard, and I serve my country, and I am proud of my country. And I, I would just appreciate somebody to be mindful of my hard work, my taxes, how is it being spent? I need to be a good steward to make sure trash isn't in my neighborhood and that my neighbors aren't hungry and that I'm helping those around me. I need somebody to be a good steward back to say we are taking mindfulness of the money that you've earned, and we're helping you to make sure that people are learning to pick up after themselves and look out for their neighbors. And again, thank you for being here in Limerick at a time where I don't have to cancel work. So thank you guys very much. Happy Memorial Day.
So Tara, thank you for your service to, to our country again, and thank you for your comments. Certainly understand your perspective. Any comments?
Hi, Abby Gerdor of Limerick Township. When I signed up, I hadn't yet seen the email that the vote for the Women's Commission was postponed, so I was busy down in South Philly watching the Philly sweep the Rangers. But I wanted to take the opportunity to, of course, thank you guys for coming to the West. But also to thank you for starting the Commission for Women, and also for what you guys have done as far as having paid parental leave for the county employees. I am a nurse. I've been taking care of women, parents, and babies in Montgomery County for twelve years. And often, I've, I've found myself being one of the most senior members of our team, and when I'm precepting new nurses, I tell them that the time that we have with parents, when they just had their babies, is, it kind of sets forth a precedence for that experience that they have makes a mark in their whole experience as parents, which then affects their children. So, you know, surrounding your employees with that support is an amazing thing that will only help not just women in our county, but all of our county residents. So thank you so much.
The county's ability wins, okay, that's important. Well, the Women's Commission has taken up a little bit of time to get through all the applications. We have more than two hundred women throughout Montgomery County that wanted to be a part of the commission, so we have to just take them to the next meeting, so we'll be able to announce who's on that mission soon. And thank you for evaluating the work that we, we did around paying parental leave. I'd like to say that I'm still a new mom, as a momless four, but I remember vividly that time thinking through, taking off from work, not getting paid for a period of that time, and how stressful that, that was for our family. My husband's a carpenter, and my company at the time did not have a paid parental leave. So we're trying to make Montgomery County a destination place to work. And when we think about being in a war for talent, these types of benefits that we're providing to employees to make them want to come work here in Montgomery County. And so we can't deliver to the residents of Montgomery County if we don't deliver for our people. And so I know this board cares tremendously about the employee experience, and making sure that we've got a well-rounded amount of benefit that really supports the whole employee. And so thank you for, for raising that, and we're really proud of that moment.
Good evening.
Ali Sasek. I am from Lynnfield, Limerick Township, and I'm also a vice president of Limerick Township Historical Society, and I want to reiterate my colleague Greg Pusak's comments about America two fifty and having a committee. So I've spoken a little bit about this with several in the room right now, and the importance of this, I don't want to understate, there's very important topics, obviously, people brought problems, concerns, and while this may seem trivial, that it's far away in twenty twenty-six, it's going to be here sooner than you know it. And so the ability to look to the past and appreciate what has happened and really create the future that we want to live in for the next two fifty years, including in Limerick the next three hundred. So I want to reiterate, please get a commission together for that, and also if there could be some youth advisors on that. There was a, the bicentennial committee, there was a youth bicentennial committee of all these local areas students. And I think giving that opportunity for them to get involved in history, to see the importance, and to write history is extremely important.
I live in Upper Pots Grove, and the Dugans, who spoke earlier, are friends of mine. For the longest time, I could not figure out why they were so upset about the homeless and the drug issues in Pottstown. And so I'm a numbers kind of guy, and I went back and kind of started to look at what's available in Pottstown. And the first thing that jumped out at me was fifty percent of all of the licensed by the state drug rehab, drug recovery homes are in Pottstown from Montgomery County. And you can go, and I put the website in the handout that I gave. And just from a square mile perspective, Pottstown is point one percent of Montgomery County. But in that little tiny area are twenty licensed recovery homes and what they're calling sober homes and transitional homes, whatever you want to call it. And you can go on Google, and you can look them up, and they actually advertise. And so what that means is that within Pottstown, the density is five hundred times what it is in the rest of Montgomery County for drug homes. And if you look at the map, within a two-mile walking radius of the drug homes, or their, their recovery homes or sober living homes, whatever the, the technology you want to use, within a two-mile walk, there are twenty of them in Pottstown. And they happen to live right next door, the two of them, where there are twenty individuals living there. And I included a list of who they are and so forth. And just want to point out, you know, this is a big business in Pottstown. These twenty homes collect two hundred dollars per person, and when you start multiplying it out per week, when you start multiplying it out, it's a one point seven million dollar a year business in Pottstown. And also included in there, the number of drug treatment facilities that are available in Pottstown. And again, Pottstown is three percent of the county's population. And Pottstown has twenty-eight percent of the drug treatment facilities in this, in the county. And also I included from the county's own websites, the crime wraps for downtown Pottstown. And the crime rate is three point two percent higher than the national average. And the rest of Montgomery County is well below the national average. So I would just ask you to just look at what I presented and give that due consideration to what you might put in Pottstown in the future.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Dur.
Good evening. Hi, Jim Dur from Pottstown. Primarily wanted to give a real positive comment for you coming up to this end of the county. We appreciate it. We know sometimes you make it up here intermittently, but to get some business done and recognize us is great. A lot of people spoke about, what was my topic also, of affordable housing, and I appreciate the Affordable Housing Summit that you guys did. Was a terrific day, some good ideas there, and just wanted to reiterate, it takes a lot of working together, a lot of trying to pull together resources at various levels. One of the areas which gets, gets pulled up is among discussion is Section Eight. If Section Eight is just left to run as it is, with local municipalities don't do anything, don't know that we can do anything about Section Eight, and on the county side, if, if you just sort of let it run as an administrative function, then not a lot happens. You know, and that's something which, the name has gotten a bad reputation just because of people talking about it. Meanwhile, it's, the people on Section Eight are not a problem. A lot of you here in the room probably know somebody who has been on Section Eight, and you probably don't know it, because it is a transitional program that's very important. Unfortunately, a lot of people who are real estate use Section Eight as a way to fund properties that they don't keep up. Hopefully, the county and local municipalities may be able to work better to try to identify those counties and determine how code enforcement can be done to make sure that properties are kept in appropriate condition. And I also wanted to, to just sort of acknowledge, yes, Kym Street Bridge, it's been a long time. And we've been watching the progress slowly, and the contracts have been making their way through, and we're looking to, to break ground. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. One last thing, just that the dragon boats we mentioned, people tend to not know that there is a Team USA team based in Pottstown. Dragon Boat Team USA primarily operates out of the Pottstown Athletic Club. People come from up and down the East Coast to train in that facility.
Good evening. Thank you for being patient with me. I'm late because I had to rescue my daughter in Hattler. She broke down, I had to come all the way from Hattler down here to try to get here by six, but it didn't quite work. Anne Harrington from Norristown, Pennsylvania. Okay. Okie doke. So go Phils. Anyway, I could cry the blues about how I grew up and had problems. I was in an orphanage at two years old and all that kind of stuff. But I'm not here for myself. I'm here for a man who appeared before you before, and he cannot be here tonight, and that's Arthur Herring. Okay, you're, you're familiar with his situation, and I know you can't give me any answers, but I have a suggestion. Hopefully, this will work. Mr. Herring, from my point of view, has been in an emotional labyrinth and cannot find that path out of it. He's stuck. And yeah, he's in a facility in Bucks County too. Some point in time, he'll probably come back to Montgomery. I'm hoping that somebody will help him find a residence, because he's not one of those thugs robbing and beating up people and things like that. He's on the street because his home was taken away, and his mother's ninety-nine and dying in a facility, okay? A lot of people don't know that, but this man, I believe, is deserving of a second chance. Excuse me. I'm just really upset with this. I've seen a lot of this happen with other people, to where they get put in a facility and they just die. And whatever family they have, they're shut out. I don't want to see this happen to him. Hopefully, when he returns to Montgomery County, somebody can assist him with finding him an efficiency apartment or something like that, and help guide him emotionally toward a good goal. Thank you.
I just, again, want to thank everyone for coming here this evening. I'm also going to ask that we have a second part meeting to this meeting. It takes about five minutes. Let's, if you all just hang with us instead of leaving, it would be good if the next five minutes go along with the first, while we just have to, it's the second part of the salary board, and it takes real, it's a real battle. And again, I want to thank everyone for, for coming here this evening. There's a lot of great information that, that we provide here. A lot of emphasis is upon what we're looking at. We're trying to research and figure out solutions as well. So glad you, glad we're here, and I'm, I look forward to us having additional meetings throughout the county.
Thank you.
I'll just reiterate, it's a pleasure to see everyone. We've probably a long, and it's, I've, I've had a meeting, and I think they made that meeting in Norristown, so it's really great to see so many of our residents here tonight, and look forward to many more. And if there are events in the community, I know there are a couple of comments made. Please send them to all of us, and we're excited, we're going to create those apps, and we look forward to seeing you all there.
And I want to, again, thank everyone for, for giving us a little bit of your time tonight. It's really always nice to be out in the community and, and hold the sentiment, but we need a new boardroom compared to the, the stuff. I'm coming next, next, next meeting. But on off, Cerisey, thanks for, for being here of the community, you being here and sharing concerns, sharing your perspectives, and just listening to the work that the county is doing is, is important, and we, we hope that you'll tell your friends and neighbors to continue to be involved in what county government is doing. So, it's nice to all of you. So upcoming meeting days, back at the board, board room is at Montgomery. Next meeting is Thursday, June sixth. That's our next board meeting. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the May twenty-third, twenty-two, twenty-four meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Representatives. There are seconds. Second, Commissioner McKeever, you don't comment?
Just please hang five minutes after this board, or ready, second.
Yeah, thank you. I want to roll over favor. I, I'm meeting for the adjutant. Next up, Lieutenant, uh, Controller of, Controller Stanchus, thanks for being here. We have walk-in music. Okay, very public comment for the Salary Board. No public comment. Okay. I'd like to invite, um, this Catherine, and all the others to review the Salary Board list.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, with a timestamp of ten forty-five A M. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Salary Board presentation given by Miss Catherine Hill. I think there are seconds. So. There's going to be four comments. Second, Commissioner McKeever, not any more comments. As Controller on the Salary Board, my yes or no vote is based on the position and not the salary, and, and salary, and not the particular work.
not the salary, and salary and not the particular work. I am planning on voting no today to the adding of two Deputy Chief Operating Officers, each at a salary of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. And it would increase in the salary of the current Deputy Chief Operating Officer, an increase of up from one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-five-hundred-six-thousand dollars to one-hundred-and-ninety-five-hundred-and-three-two dollars. In addition, I am also voting no in the position of Senior Policy Officer, salary of nine-three-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-two dollars. And as a consequence for these three new positions, an increase to one-hundred and seven, total of four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars. On January eleventh, on January eleventh Salary Board, we voted to add a Care Specialist at salary of seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. As new State Department of Medics Specialist, a salary of seventy-six-thousand-five. On February seventh Salary Board, we voted to add a Director of Internal Affairs for a salary of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. On the April fourth Salary Board, we voted to add a Communication Specialist at salary of six-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars. And on the April eight Salary Board, we voted to add a Social Media Manager at salary of seven-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-four thousand dollars. And a Intergovernmental Care Manager at salary of eighty-two-thousand-five. Now, on May twenty-third, we are proposing to add a Deputy Chief Operating Officer for a total of three, when just in July of twenty-twenty-three, we added a new Deputy Chief Operating Officer for a total of two. We had only several lines of working for the Deputy Chief Operating Officer since the one position had been vacant since we found them. So, I don't agree to adding a third Deputy Chief Operating Officer. Your vote is a salary which currently stands at one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-six dollars should be increased to one-hundred-and-ninety-seven. The current Deputy Operating Officer's salary is increased to one-hundred-and-eighty-two-hundred-and one-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, ten months ago, which was consistent with the competition strategy. The current Deputy Chief Operating Officer's salary will again increase to one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-six dollars on December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, five months ago. Now, we are proposing an increase of three thousand dollars outside of the statute of competition. With regards to senior policies, I'd like to adjourn. A warrant and a bully, this title would be doing, but it should be done by either the Chief, Deputy Chief Operating Officer and/or by the Governor, the Department of Medicare Managers, Title Four eighteen, and/or by the Director of Internal Affairs, Title Twenty Seven. Therefore, I am moving no on the addition of this senior policy for every position at a salary of ninety-three-thousand-five.
Any additional comments? I hear none. So, a couple of things, and then I want to talk a little bit about the two people that will be taking, hopefully, taking on this role. So, we're the third largest county in Pennsylvania. Montgomery County has a billion-dollar budget with nearly three thousand employees who work in thirty-five different departments, reports, and our road offices. We believe that by adding a third Deputy CIOO, these departments will have additional, an additional resource, both for bi-laboratory reporting and for receiving the necessary support and assistance in their day-to-day operations. Overall, these hires will prove our efficiency, leaving this government and our care priorities for how to pay our employees and our residents to deserve and expect. And a couple of other things, these salaries reflect the responsibility that follow further the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, bearing in mind with the organization of our science and responsibility. Several talent managers in Montgomery County earn a similar salary and have a fraction of our employees' spend budget to manage. And Montgomery County's public budget has rapidly grown to be one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand over the last fifteen years. In addition, the previous administration had planned that the new administration would identify our own priorities for moving the county forward. And in doing so, the twenty-twenty-four budget and fund balance was approved with flexibility to add priority positions. This administration has prioritized critical staffing needs in a number of areas throughout the organization, including in our Coroner's Office, Registered Wills, Voter Services, the Office of Children and Women, Communications, External Affairs, Human Services, and our control of services. And there will be other priorities that will be identified as in the days ahead. So, with that, I'm thrilled, before we move to a vote, that Dr. Taylor Williams and Christina Fernandez will be joining the county's senior deputy chief as Deputy Chief Operating Officer. These are two incredibly qualified women and the first women of color to hold these high-level positions. I want to take a moment to reflect on the importance of these critical titles for the government to be representative of the people that we serve. Dr. Williams, who's here, you can maybe wave, wave your hand. I've had the pleasure of working with you over the last year in the capacity as the Director of the Department of Health and Women's Services. And during that time, I have admired your compassion, dedication to service, leadership, cross-departmental collaboration, and diplomacy, not to mention the prodding products. I have no doubt that you will bring those attributes into the Commissioner's office to support the county's operations that focus upon human services. And Christina Hernandez, who could not be here tonight, will be coming to us from the Philadelphia Mayor's Office, where she's served in a variety of roles over the last eight years. The most recent was the Chief of Staff to Mayor Kenny. Christina will be overseeing our Board of Assessments, Congress Department, Communications, External Affairs, Policy, Planning Mission, and Voter Services. And she will be charged with ensuring that we are actively listening and engaging with our residents, municipalities, business owners, voters, and other community members, and guide the development of our county's public policies. I know both of these women will add their unique perspectives and lived experiences in a way that positively impacts every county, the county's decision-making and operations, from our services and programs to our policies and communication. I am grateful to those who went through the search process that resulted in getting us two very highly qualified individuals to join our county's senior leadership team. And so, I, I want to take a moment to preemptively congratulate this historic moment and congratulate Dr. Williams, Christina Hernandez, on their resilience. So, with that, I'd like to call a roll call.
So, first off, thank you for your ideas and thoughts and concerns. I very much appreciate that. I, I have looked very closely into this as well and I really weighed the options as far as what made sense for you. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to be doing better. And what I hope that comes out of this, if I support this initiative, is that, that I'm, we're able to identify areas of cost savings. And we really evaluate all of the positions and what, you know, what everyone's doing and moving forward. So, I've been looking at this as an investment into the county and I hope that it's a good investment. And if it's not, I'll be very hopeful about it, believe me. And as, you know, colleagues have known, I've raised questions, I've thought about this and, you know, it has nothing to do with the, you know, the individuals, I agree with you, it has nothing to do with the individuals, I think, those people. And this will provide a lot of value to the county. I really thought long and hard about this as far as where I wanted to go. And I hope, I'm not wrong, I hope that it has become very beneficial to come down and have a long-term positive impact on what's actually moving forward. By far, I really do want to, you know, I do appreciate what you brought up this evening and there's a lot of things that I thought long and hard about, so thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. We're going to move to a vote. I'd like to call a roll call vote for a response to go on the record. So, first off, I'll, I'll, Vice Chair McKeever. Commissioner DeLore. Controller Sanchez. Now, for the Deputy CIOO, Senior Policy Advisor. Deputy CIOO salary change and a Deputy CIOO promotion on HHS. And I'm on a yes vote. So, with that, the motion has been, congratulations, Dr. Williams. And next up, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Montgomery County Council for a second. Second by Commissioner DeLore, any more comments? Any to vote on favor on the motion, Karen. Please adjourn. Thanks, everyone.